Okay, it's five o'clock. I have called this meeting of the township board of Bedford Charter Township. Special meeting to order. First on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pause now for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Before we do roll call, Treasurer.
Um, I just want to let everybody know, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was gonna say your name, but it's okay.
Sorry, Christie Davis. I would like everybody to know that Joyce will not be joining us tonight. Her dad died this morning. So, we would like to send our condolences to her. Our thoughts are with her and our prayers are with her. Thank you.
All right, I will do roll call. Treasurer Davis?
Here.
Trustee Menke?
Here.
Trustee Hoskins?
Here.
Trustee McKay, here. Trustee Blanchard?
Here.
Clerk Paraco excused absence. Next on the agenda is, I'll entertain a motion to elect somebody to be the president pro temp for this meeting. Motion?
Motion.
So who? You, me?
Chief.
All those in favor, voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Does the board have any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none? Voice vote on approval of the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries? Public comment? Public comment on agenda items all.
Uh, the only comment I have is about the resolution at the end where we're gonna choose somebody. I know we have a forum, so we obviously can do that without a new college. We get to that point. Uh, I just would like the board to consider the fact that we do have a main component absent this evening. I think if we postponed that and allowed the clerk to watch the interviews and have the input, I mean, she would be working with this person closely. Uh, that just might be something to do. Uh, and I think, I think we would make that deadline if we did it at the next meeting. You're all aware of that, I'm sure, but I thought we were saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We close public comment at five oh four. Our primary purpose tonight is to interview for the supervisor position. Just as a reminder to all applicants, you must A, be a township resident, B, be registered to vote in the township. Some of the, uh, interview conditions, I'll be conducting the interviews. We are limiting the total time for each applicant to thirty minutes. Twenty minutes will be a set of questions from me. And then the rest of the board will ask their own questions. The questions that I'm asking are compiled by all of us to all applicants. So everybody's getting the same questions. However, the board questions may vary based upon your responses to the initial questions. If it becomes necessary, I will have to cut you off if you're being a little verbose in your response. Because I need to get through, I have thirteen questions that I need to ask you. And we have a time limit, so just want you to know that if I say we're running out of time, my timekeeper here will tell me when we're at twenty minutes. And that's approximately where we need to end with each applicant. Joyce made a, a list of, uh, interview times and does anybody else have anything to say? Bear with me, I, my allergies are going berserk and, uh, I'm semi-medicated, but not totally medicated. I want to fall asleep. So, our first applicant is Bart Newman. Come right up here and have a seat in the chair. If you're not acquainted with our fancy equipment, there's a little button right here. Push that button till it's green.
Yo.
Good evening.
Hi there.
Hi there. Bart, we're gonna start off with the number one question that you probably guessed we were gonna ask.
All right.
Why are you interested in the supervisor position?
Uh, I've been the township president for twenty-five, thirty years. I started at a municipality two years ago for the city of Battle Creek. Being involved in some type of city or township government is something that's always been on my list and I retired from Denko about five years ago and just been second a month and I saw the, uh, advertisement in the newspaper. Thought I'd throw my hat in there.
Okay, thank you. What experiences do you have with township or city government of any type?
I don't have a lot, uh, to be straight up on that. My biggest claim to fame that would pertain something like that is I'm heavily involved in a professional motorcycle event that's held in Buchanan, Michigan. Basically, we have a facility to bring in twenty to twenty-five thousand people once a year, Fourth of July weekend. And I'm integral part of setting up where things show, why they go there, who goes where. Security, we basically build a, a small campground or a large campground, I guess. Every year for the last twenty years.
Okay, great. Tell me about your experience as a manager or a leader of a group or organization.
Um, well, I have several. Um, I lived at Niffon Wingo for twenty-five years, like I said. I was fifteen years as a team leader or sub-leader. I led teams anywhere from thirty people or fifteen to thirty people, depending on what area I was in. Moved around, some where I worked in the quality department, so I had, um, dealings with different people rather than just subordinates. I had to deal with engineering and the die shop and the mechanics and that type of thing. And then I'll go back to the motorcycle and, uh, other than charging amateur racing throughout Michigan for fifteen years. So I had fourteen promoters and, uh, thirty thousand riders that I had to try and make happy. So, um, that's where my experience.
Okay. How much experience do you have working with the public? Obviously, you have some, I already heard already.
Quite a bit of experience working with the public. Um, I think I have a pretty calm demeanor. Not one to fly off the handle. Have trouble controlling my look on my face sometimes, but I'm working on that.
Okay. Uh, do you have the experience working with, uh, capital improvement projects?
Yeah.
Okay. Any machinery experience, you know, like installing or ordering new machinery or anything like that?
Um, I've been, uh, worked in automotive car places. So I've, you know, been in the parts ordering business before.
Okay.
Um, as far as equipment, that type of thing, I have not been in direct position to order stuff like that. Uh, I have worked in facilities where I gave my input. I thought this would be good, that would be good.
Okay. What qualities do you have that you think would make a good fit for a supervisor?
I feel like I'm firm but fair. I'm a consistent guy that has a level playing field. No matter if Jane is super friendly, Frank is super mean. I can treat both two as equals. And trying to come up with a plan that's not only advantageous for the people that are involved, but also the entity that I'm representing, so.
Do you have any experience working with budgets, especially government budgets?
Not government budgets. Um, but again, at Denzo, we had a budget. We could only make this much crap, you know, I had this many hours. And I had to make those two things work. And then again with the racing stuff, I took in so much money and I had to make a banquet and buy awards and set up meeting rooms and facilitate meetings within this amount of money, so.
Okay. Do you have any experience running a public meeting or any type of meeting?
Yes.
Okay, explain that a little.
So, um, there again, when I was in the motorcycle part of things, um, we had three, uh, yearly meetings to talk about schedules, rules, what we were gonna do to improve or fix any problems that way. I used the Robert's Rule of Order to do that. And five years since I've done that, but
Okay.
I have the rules and the basic premise in my head.
Explain how would you build, excuse me, I can't talk. How would you build consensus among board members related to a difficult topic that needs to be voted on?
Yes, I would speak to each one individually and try and come up with a, an idea of what the board is looking for based, or in conjunction with what the township or the residents of the township needed and try and come up with a a plan or a consensus that would make us all be on the same page.
Okay. How well do you handle stress and keep yourself calm under pressure?
I do a pretty good job. Like I said, I struggle with the look on my face sometimes according to my wife. Now, I can't see my face myself, so maybe that's just her, her action.
That's okay.
Um, I don't, I, I don't know if you've heard the phrase Little League Dad, but we have fifty cc parents, which are the smallest kids. And the world is out of revolving around Little Johnny. And if you don't make Little Johnny's mom or dad and grandpa grandma happy, so you know, I've been called my fair share of names and, you know, help my cool. It's, it's something you have to do and if you're working with the public, I mean, it's just not acceptable to fly off the handle or do something.
Right. Do you have any experience, um, writing requests for proposals or negotiating contracts?
Yeah.
Okay. How would you handle a conflict resolution issue that relates to a public complaint? So the public is complaining about something to you.
Um, I think I would take the complaint and try and look at it from their shoes and try and see if it was a justified complaint. I mean, are they complaining that the leaves are falling off the tree and now it's covered up the sidewalk and why are we talking about it? But you have to look that way. Um, again, you have to try and show empathy to the person that's complaining and try and explain why we can and can't do, or we can only do this much or that much to resolve the problem.
Okay. Do you have any business or personal conflicts that would prevent you from devoting your full attention to this position?
I'd be lying if I said I didn't. I don't have a business per se that, um, would interfere or have a conflict of interest of what I'm doing. But, um, one thing I am heavily involved with, we talked about it a couple of times, the motorcycle stuff. So, having a red bug, I've taken two weeks off in July for twenty years. And I probably wouldn't set that aside, you know? I try and make arrangements for what I'm gonna do, what I'm gonna do, how I'm gonna be there. You know, I'm a call-in guy, but I do have to know that, because that's on my list for sure.
Okay. I'm now gonna ask the board if they have any follow-up questions that they'd like to ask.
I got one. Um, this position is, uh, interim, basically. It's next year, November, it's gonna go up for reelection. Are you aware of that, or?
I, I assume that it was elected position.
Right.
I thought it was odd that, when I saw the posting page.
Well, next November, we'll have another special election and it'll go up, um. So are you willing to give up your full-time job or whatever to do this?
So this is not a job, it's a, it's a, a seat on the board, or?
Well, it's, it's a full-time job, but y- you will be able to, you know, be one of the people to be elected, you know, because you have to run for reelection.
So if I took the position.
You'll have it for, you're guaranteed a year.
And maybe Bruce will run against me and win.
It won't be Bruce. I just wanted you, you know.
Okay, I appreciate you letting me know. Um, I guess I have to see how the job go. Uh, I'll be honest with you, I asked Joyce for a a job description thing and it was way more intense than I thought it was gonna be. Not that that's a bad thing. One of the reasons why I applied for something like this. Right now, I'm just an operations guy at the city of Battle Creek and as much as I like feeling powerful, there's a lot more to to me and to use my mind and other skills that I have. I answered your question.
Well.
I just, I just wanted to know if you were aware of it, that.
I wasn't aware of that, so I appreciate you letting me know.
Okay.
Scott, do you have any?
Yeah, uh, so, how would you take what you've gleaned from your previous job experiences and bring to the township of Bedford?
I'm, I feel like I'm gonna get it done, take care of the mission person. So I look at the, the obstacle or the problem or what we have and try and come up with a solution to fix it.
Can you, can you describe a, a specific example of when you had to do that?
The one that comes to mind is, has something to do with manufacturing. Do you wanna know that?
Sure.
Okay. So, in the manufacturing plant that I worked at in Pendenzo, we had a path that goes on the end of the heater core. And through trial and tribulations and measurements, we found that when we reached a certain point on the dimensions, we would start getting leakers, which caused those heater cores to gel. They were still in stock as far as the dimple depths and all that. But the machinery would wear out enough that the opening would start getting wide. But we did a tracking exercise where we could determine that when it got to this, even though it was in stock, it would start getting weak. So we put in place a measurement weekly or daily, and started going daily, because of such a high scrap matter. And we saved the company two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars a year just by tracking the problem and coming up with a, with a common denominator of what was causing our problem.
Anything else, Scott?
Nope.
Christie?
Um, yes, as an interested citizen of Bedford Township who has applied for the supervisor position, I was wondering if you can give me three examples where you have made a difference in our community?
Uh, in your community directly, I have not. You know, I can't think of a big example off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Shannon?
Yeah, uh, nice to meet you.
Hi.
Um, how long have you lived in Bedford Township?
Uh, ninety-seven.
So on top of this job daily, um, it, sometimes it involves evening meetings, things like that, uh, conferences, zoning administration, fire department, there's a lot of legs to this position.
Yeah.
So is that something you think you would be willing to take on? It is, it is a large job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, there again, so one of the reasons why I'm interested is because I feel it will challenge me. I will, again, I like to problem solve, I like to I like to be in charge or not, I don't know if in charge is right, but I like to need a solution to fix problems. That's, um, something that interests me personally, interesting.
Perfect, thank you.
I don't think it would be.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Shannon?
I'm good, thank you.
How's our time, timekeeping?
We got five minutes.
Okay. Do you have any other questions on us?
Um, not necessarily a question, just, um, I'm a, I'm a quiet farmer that works hard and tries to do the right thing. Public speaking, I can do it. You just get terrified, like everybody else, but I've done enough, then it's okay. The, again, like the municipality thing, that was something that I told my wife twenty years ago, I wanted to leave. So when I retire, on municipality, that's not living up to it. It's not challenging enough, so I'm looking for something, you know? It's not a big job hopper or, you know, I'm not looking to do the next biggest thing. I'm looking for something that I can do. You know, I'm early sixties. Enjoy being around people, dealing with people and fixing problems. So, that's why I'm interested in this position.
Okay.
From that grade of showing people how wonderful I am, but I'm a get-it-done kind of guy and that's kind of what I go by.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, you can have a seat.
Great.
Hold on, the next one, next person will need it. Adam Michaela. You weren't here when I went over the, the few rules.
Watching.
You're watching?
Yeah.
So you know the time limits and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Excellent, excellent. Then I gotta get reorganized. Okay, is your green button on?
Green button is on.
All right, thank you. Why are you interested in the supervisor position?
Well, obviously I've been interested in it since I, nineteen twenty-sixteen, when he was elected. Been interrupted, ultimately sent aside, started to get involved in the township. It was really back in about two thousand and fifteen. Myself, like many other people, I've never been involved in my local municipality until something impacted me negatively. Um, and so when, when, uh, something impacted me negatively, I started getting involved. I started going to meetings. Um, and at that time, started just learning more about what the township does and, uh, how it functions and started to see things that I thought, man, maybe I could help improve.
Great, great. This'll sound silly, asking you this question, but I, but I ask everybody the same questions.
Yeah, I heard some of them I thought were.
What experiences do you have with township or city government?
Right, obviously I was elected in two thousand and sixteen, um, but I've been greatly involved beyond that. You know, even though I was recalled in, uh, two thousand and eighteen, I still continue to maintain my attendance to all the meetings. I, you know, recording many of them so that people, you know, before the township was, was recording. Um, so people could see them. Um, not only here, though, I've attended many local municipal meetings all over, uh, southwest Michigan. Um, I've actually now, since, uh, twenty twenty, I've, uh, been reached out to by many individuals for different issues that they're having in their local communities. Um, trying to figure out how do I fix this? What, you know, I've seen that you've had some issues in your township. What can, you know, what can you do to help me? What route can I go? Who should I speak to? What's the, what's the procedure or the path that we need so that we can make a proper correction? Um, so, you know, I've just been involved here in a lot of places at different.
Okay, great. What experience do you have as a manager and or leader of an organization?
Yes, so what actually got me involved in politics was actually a nonprofit in town that, uh, got me involved there. Um, and that was right before I ran for office in twenty sixteen. And so I also manage my own business. I, uh, I am a repair guy. I am someone who likes to fix things. That's just simply what I do, literally physically all day with my hands. I am someone that fixes, uh, devices of all types. You know, I have repair shops in Hastings, Battle Creek, and a franchise location in Grand Rapids now. And so, you know, we have, um, you know, just, that's, yeah.
Okay, all right. Again, here's another question. How much experience do you have working with the public?
Right, every single day. It's, I work with the public and, um, you know, uh, right now, uh, my, my community has been up in Hastings since I left in twenty nineteen. I opened up in Hastings and then, uh, you know, building relationships in that community. But before that, I had been building my business here and my brother runs the location. Now we just purchased a spot and are on Columbia Avenue. Um, and so, yeah, every single day, I just, that's, that's what I do is help the public.
Okay. Describe your experience with any capital improvement projects.
Absolutely. Well, one of the capital improvement projects would be the lights that you see above us right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so while I was here, um, it's one of the, the projects that I put forth. Um, you know, the Consumers Energy has their, their energy efficiency programs and so I was looking into ways. Ultimately, when I, when I started in the township, my, my mindset was really, I wanted to see if I could just cut ten percent off of everything across the board so that we could figure out how to have more money for multiple different things. And so, a- any, any way that I could look, I was looking at ways to save money. And obviously with the energy, um, you know, with the efficiency, we went from four bulbs in, in every one of these, um, you know, that were running thirty-two watts a bulb down to, I can't remember what they are, but I think they're less than thirty watts for everything right now for every one of these units. So, um, that was a project that would have actually cost the township a lot of money. But I ended up doing all the physical working for it. Um, and so it only cost us after the rebates, like, less than three thousand dollars. But on top of that, I'd worked on grants for, uh, the nonprofit organizations. I've helped with, um, obviously the budgeting here and all of those factors as well.
Great. What qualities do you have that you think would make you a good fit for the supervisor position?
Yeah. Um, well, people have told me I'm kind of a leader, naturally when I've gotten into every group. You know, that's one of the things, uh, I was part of a group that was in national and international media in twenty twenty. We, um, organized rallies, uh, around the state of Michigan that, you know, garnered a lot of attention. And then all of those people that I had just met, you know, they very quickly said, hey, I'd like you to be our M C and, you know, help lead this for us. So, yeah. It's just many, many different things I could, I don't know. You, you know, I could run for hours and talk, you know, so, so I bet. I really wanna try to be cut. I know I got like about a minute for every.
Couple of minutes, yeah, I know.
So we were, yeah.
So describe your experience working with budgets, especially government budgets.
Yeah, the budgets, um, that's one of the major things that I said at the last meeting was thanking you guys for, you know, focusing on helping to make it a little easier even for the supervisor here to do the budget. Because governmental accounting is a tricky thing. It is very different and you have to look at, um, it, but, it is what it is. And I, I mean, it, I don't know, for me though, numbers for me, I've just always been, you know, a numbers guy. That's part of the thing. In my family, we're a bunch of freaks when it comes to mathematics. And so, you know, part of why my technology, my coding, the things that I do, it's just part of what goes on in my brain. Um, and so when I did the budget here, I don't believe we ever had any issues after I had done the budget. And ultimately I did it on my own. And, and, you know, that's just the way it had been going really. It's just the, each department for, um, for years had, you know, just been giving what they thought was, you know, what, what they needed, what they were expecting, changes, things like that. Um, and then there wasn't really much other, you know, meetings to, to dig deeper into a lot of the situations. And so, um, yeah, so, so, yeah, I, I, I get it, I understand it. I thank you guys for, you know, whoever gets the job is gonna be better for you, I'm for sure.
Gonna rephrase the next question. How do you like running a public meeting?
To be honest, I, I don't mind running public meetings. I've not, I've run many different meetings now, not just, you know, for the township. And so, you know, it, it's not bad running a meeting. It's always bad when you have politics and things going on against you, whoever you are. You know, so, so that's not, never fun. Truly though, if we look back on, we're, we're, most all my videos, my, my meetings were recorded and I think if we look back, I, I really did, when I was chair, I believe I held my decorum for the most part in meetings. I, I did my best. I didn't really. When I was chair, I believe I held my decorum for the most part in meetings, I, I did my best, I didn't really speak back to. People in a nasty, you know, manner, I, I didn't want you, I, I, you know, we're in a position of service when we're elected and in that position. Um, you know, I, there is a level of respect that is, that is due to the public that's there, because it is a hard thing to come and speak to a word. Um, it shouldn't be, but it is.
Yeah.
So.
How would you build consensus among board members that are struggling with a difficult topic that needs to be voted on?
I mean, what topic that needs to be voted on?
Building consensus, more or less.
Yeah, I mean. You know, for me, I just speak to the facts of the matter, I mean, that's all you're gonna do, I mean, if I'm gonna be voting for something, it's because I believe in it. And so I'm gonna speak to it as to why I believe in it, I mean, that's all we should, I don't think we should be ever trying to manipulate people for a vote in any capacity. It's uh, we stick to the facts and say, hey, this is, this is what I, I believe is the best situation for the township. This is why, this is things that could be bad, this could be good, you know, I mean, it's always a, a balancing act, especially when you're in, in public.
Okay. So now we're talking about how you handle stress and ability to stay calm under pressure.
Yes, you know, that's a great one, um, a lot of people. Uh, you know, have only seen uh, the, the few little snippets of me when I've been upset, and, and those times have been, you know, really have been few. And the many, many, many interactions that I have had, um, and in those times, there's been something that's triggered that. Um, you know, one of those times when I was actually charged with things here, that I've been going through court, and I was found. That I actually was not the cause of that, um, people situation, and so, um. I. Have a hard time, and, and in those situations, I guess you'll see too, that it's typically dealing with someone that is in the position of authority. It's, you know, I, I'm not dealing with someone that, um, again, uh, you're not gonna find anywhere, uh, on record that while I was in my position. That I really, errantly out of my own a way in any capacity spoke down or, or, or did that. There's actually, um, I love sharing with people that they don't know, there was actually a police report that was filed one time here in the township where a claim was made that I had. Um, been belligerent to the women here, um, but in that report, the ladies even said that I had never even raised my voice. Um, and so I, I still don't, I have a hard time for anyone believing someone is belligerent without even raising their voice, so.
Okay, good. Again, another question that you're probably know the answer to quickly. Experience writing requests for proposals or negotiating contracts?
Yes. Um, several, many, um, one of the most fun actually was helping my friend to acquire his business. That's the franchise location in Grand Rapids, because he was someone who was nothing but an employee, didn't have a business, you know, employee manager. Owner mindset in any capacity, and he was scared to death, thought he was just gonna go out of business and find a new job somewhere, was already looking at some places. And um, I helped him in the whole negotiating process, the purchases, his, his business for pennies on the dollar, for things that he didn't. Um, just because I understood the situation, I, you know, it's my business, I, I understand the, the whole market and the field it was in. Um, so I was able to just help him literally get it for pennies, um, he actually paid more than he should have, because he gave away more, but that was beside. Yeah, yeah, and like I said, the request for proposals, all of that, um, I've done multiple of them before. Um, yeah, for, for multiple different groups, so, yeah.
How do you handle conflict resolution and public complaints?
Yeah. Um. Well, that's, that's a good one, because, uh. People come in and complain to me at our shop in Hastings all the time. Not about me, but about other things, right, like I literally have been still. Helping. People that are complaining about things with the government, right? And that's, that's what people come to me for, they, they, you're never gonna believe, that, that's one of the favorite lines that I get still when people come out, uh, reach out to me for help. You're never gonna believe what's, what they're doing or what's going on. And it's like, no, that's, oh, no, you're, you know, um, it's all the same stuff, we, we, the, the same problems are going on everywhere, is what we found. I can just ramble on this.
Okay, that's all right. Do you have any business or personal conflicts that would prevent you from devoting, you know, your full-time attention to this?
No, I, I do own my own business, but I've got, uh, you know, I've got ways to, to have time away all the time. That's, you know, uh, for, for my business right now, we already looked at that, that it would not be any, any issue, um. Uh, because I've got, I've got helpers, I've got workers and, and people to, to, you know, cover, so. Um, it would actually be nice to be able to be away, um, and, uh. Yeah, and that's what, and that's what, you know, there's owners, but I just, I have the freedom and choice to do.
Right.
Where I wanna be, what time and what.
Good. Okay, we're ready for the board questions. You want me to start with you again, Bruce, or?
No, not yet, I'm uh.
He's working on it. Anybody ready? Christie, go ahead.
Um, what role does public trust play in this position, and how would you work to maintain that?
Public trust. Um. I, public trust obviously is, is there for. Lots of things, um. I think that's part of what I've been still involved, why I've still stayed involved, is to help that public trust. Um, you know, because I. I have, as I said, been, been involved because I saw things that were either wrong or should be done better, um. And, and I, and again, I thank you guys for meeting that, of all of the things that I have been pointing out. Since twenty fifteen now, that are finally slowly getting changed and better. Um, you know, it does, it takes a change of board member sometimes just to make that right cohesion and, and, and things to move along. Um, I think that there have been a lot of people here that have been, you know, here for a long time, um, and that, uh. They had kind of built a trust amongst a few other individuals, and outside of that, there was no other trust, and. Um, you know, I, I, I just, I don't think that's a healthy environment for anyone to live in a community. Um, and so I think that, again, I think, yeah, I, I think. I think you guys have been building more trust in some things, just because of your decisions, I mean, that's one of the, the things as well, the decision-making of what you do is gonna help build that trust and.
Thank you. I think you answered all the questions, but my one question is, how long have you been a, a resident of Bedford?
Uh, I've been in Bedford now for nineteen, twenty, twenty, don't know twenty years. But I live literally next door, right across North Avenue, one house onto Wagon Wing, that's where I lived and grew up, so. Pretty much that.
Okay. Scott?
Um, yeah, so, if you could provide a specific example of a problem that you solved using. Um, the tools that you've picked up through your professional and extracurricular experiences.
I guess, like, what kind of thing you want to fix?
Um, just, uh, I, I'm looking, I'm not looking at the specific problem as much as I'm looking at the methodology behind how you went about it.
How we want to go fixing something?
Yep.
Like maybe something that I fixed for the first time?
Sure.
Sure, um, I mean, for like my business, who, uh, you know, we, we have, uh. Just a, a few weeks ago, I had a, uh, Ford F three fifty Thicke. A, you know, uh, fuel injection controlled module. So they brought it in, it's a big old metal aluminum box. Um, it's got a bunch of bolts in it and a couple connectors, um, to control the fuel injectors, and they go out all the time. Um, for that, pretty simple. Google search, like everyone that, got some information as far as, you know, common issues with the Thicke, what they did. Um, noticed that it was already a remanufactured Thicke, which, you know, um, and so after tearing it down, um. I went through and I've taken apart majority of things now, so I just went around and inspected it, and then. Uh, went through and removed all the bolts and, uh, definitely keep them in a pattern where they come out, so you put them back the same. Um, and then. Yeah, it, it's, uh, on that, that repair, I was able to take it apart and notice that. Uh, being a remanufactured, the common thing on the Thickes is, they have two boards, a power board and then the control board. Uh, the power board, uh, is what typically goes out on, that's why they have intermittent power, is what they have with their trucks. Um, and so I noticed that that was not the same board that comes standard on all the videos and other research that I did, uh, comes in, installed. It was already remanufactured, and noticed then that it smelled burnt, which is a clear sign that there's an issue, and so. Ordered the new board, reinstalled it, you know, yeah.
All right, thank you. That's not something you typically work on either, is it?
No, cell phones, computers, um, tablets, you know, but, uh, I mean, we, we do board level solder repairs. And so we've been fixing a lot, I, I've gotta start advertising for those specifically because. Uh, another customer just came in and said it cost them over a thousand dollars to send away and have his bill somewhere else, so. But I'm short myself a lot, but I mean, that's, you know, I do based on my hourly rate what it takes me to do a job, and then it's still, yeah.
Bruce, do you have anything?
I think I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions, board members? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
You have fifty-six seconds.
We did good. We're running a little ahead of schedule.
I know, but who is our next one?
Randy's our next one, but I don't see him in the. Yeah.
We probably should, right, and. I don't know if we should start earlier, because he won't be here till fifteen probably.
Well, we can continue on.
If somebody's here.
If you want to do that.
I don't know everybody here, Jerry, are you here? Is that you, Jerry?
Jerry.
You ready to come on up? How do I pronounce your last name?
Hardik.
Hardik.
Hardik?
As a college professor, I always ask those questions, because I get names that I'm looking at.
I grew up saying, party, lost my life, I learned that in Scotland, and he said, the bird.
Hardik, yeah. It's amazing, it's amazing how sometimes. Names. Well, you've kind of heard what's going on, so we'll, we'll start with you now, and Jerry, why are you interested in the supervisor position?
I like to, uh, participate in the community and do that, and, you know, I've been an engineer most of my life. And I'm reaching a point where I wanna do something more.
Okay, okay. Do you have any experience with township or city government?
Uh, I've been to a board meeting. Long time ago.
Okay.
You know.
City or township?
Bedford township.
Okay, Bedford, okay.
So, I've had some things with that.
Okay.
You know, with the way government's set up and, you got ordinances, you got fire trucks, ambulances. You kind of encompass the township and zoning and.
What experience do you have as a manager or leader of an organization?
Um, at a previous company, I was. Running the forming and trimming department, where we made millions of parts. We had multiple people and have to. Go from. Equipment capacity to people problems, to get people to train, making sure everybody's doing the right job, and actually achieving. True put at ninety-eight percent.
Okay. Good. Do you have any experience working with the public?
No.
That even a long time ago when you were young?
Four.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm called man, or I like to listen.
Okay, okay. Have you had any experience with capital improvement projects or capital expenditures or?
Oh, yes, um, I followed equipment to Malaysia, installed it at a sister company, um, and then to China. With this way, and to Japan to look at some stuff. You know, even sourcing equipment locally.
Okay.
Local guys bringing it in, uh, to a certain type of job function. That people will be using, making sure it's safe and making sure it needs a budget.
Okay. What qualities do you have that make you a good fit for the supervisor position?
I like to listen, I like to understand where people are coming from. When you get two people that don't necessarily agree on something, sometimes they're just looking at it from different perspectives. And you're talking about the same thing. So it's important to listen to people, then to provide them with the information needed so that they understand what it is. They need to know further to help them.
Okay. Okay. What experience do you have working with budgets, especially government budgets?
Um, I haven't worked on a government budget, but I've worked on budgets for car platforms. Uh, when you make multiple plastic parts inside of a vehicle. You know, you gotta put your clips and widgets and bumpers and accessories and shoddy pads and. You got equipment to make all those parts and secondary equipment. You gotta quote it out to multiple sources, gotta go for. Sometimes people quote.
Okay. Okay. You said you have attended some public meetings, have you ever run a public meeting?
I've never ran a public meeting.
How about a company type meeting?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Explain how you did that.
Um, you know, you, you call the meeting, you talk about a topic, whether it's a who calls failure analysis to understand. Why something is broken, or whether it's to get together to. Put together a group to encompass an unknown problem that you're trying to achieve. You know, if, if I got a supplier that makes a grand. And they tell you we can't make part any better, also we, we'll have a meeting with them and. We work with them and we teach them and show them and run some trials and heavily use statistics. To prove the outcome of how they can achieve to make a good part one hundred percent of the time.
How would you build consensus among board members related to a difficult topic that the board needs to vote on?
Well, you have to list all your facts, you have to list your pros, you have to list your cons. Everybody needs to be aware of all those, there are no hidden secrets, there are no hidden agendas, everything's open. And you discuss it openly.
Okay. How do you handle stress and ability to stay calm under pressure?
I am probably the calmest person you will ever meet. I, I listen, I'm calm, I don't, if you have to yell at someone, the conversation's over, because people stop listening. Um, I don't raise my voice. I stay calm all the time.
Okay. Do you have any experience writing requests for proposals or negotiating contracts?
Um. For proposals for like a car platform, when you're, have multiple car parts, and you have to write a book about that thick of all the specifications. Or, we have to use this type of equipment manufacturer. You know, we wanna have the, the frame built a certain way and new specifications, but you gotta have the specifications for the proposal. To present them to people, to gather your quotes. That they're all quoting apples to apples.
Right.
And they, then they try to throw an orange in there, I mean. Oh, it's fun.
How would you handle conflict resolution with a public member having a complaint?
Oh, um. Long time ago, there's a complaint for smoke in my yard, at the time I. And she was my wife, and has one, makes it harder to breathe, and I come up here to the township and there's. They tell me people have the right to burn, so I was like, okay, well, let me see the ordinance for burning ordinance. And they didn't have one, I had to get it from the Department of Environmental Quality. They actually had a cop get it, then I could start applying the ordinance. Because ordinances are basically where we all have to get along. Now, if someone has a problem, okay, is there an ordinance that relates to that problem? Maybe they're unaware of the ordinance, how it's written, you know, because that's where you start it. Now, if someone comes in with a totally separate issue, where there's no ordinance, okay. That would, you'd wanna understand where they're coming from, understand the. How big it is or how little it is. Um. Now, is it, is it worth going for another ordinance on that? I, I, I don't know, um. A lot of times just talking to people and listening to them and giving them an understanding how it usually alleviates.
Do you have any business or personal conflicts that prevent you from devoting your full time to this position?
I would devote one hundred percent of my time to this position.
You're ready to go.
That's right.
Okay. Board members?
As we have discussed, this is an interim position till possibly November for election. If you're working full time, are you willing to, I guess, give that up to come here and do this position? Not a guaranteed, it's a ten month position and then you'd go on the ballot.
I'm currently not working, so I'll give it a hundred percent.
Okay. And how long have you been a pastor?
Uh, since about twenty-ten.
Okay.
Kristy?
Um, what do you believe are the most pressing issues of our township today and how would you address those issues?
Most pressing issue would probably be, uh, you know, zoning. You know, there's, uh, I think zoning should be visited to make sure that commercials doing commercial, residential doing residential. You know, do the if there's a acreage requirement for a certain type of business to function, is that, are all of them meeting that criteria? I don't know if that's pressing or not. Might just be an adjustment of the ordinance. Safety is always, I'd say roads, but we got the best road. Product road order, the road project that went through several years ago, the road never yet. But people always complain about roads, energy costs or.
Okay, thank you.
He answered my question.
Well. Bruce? Um, this job entails a lot of, uh, maybe meetings outside of here, maybe even after hours. There's a training, you can go like the MTA and that, or there's just a lot of things that might be after hours. Do you have a problem doing those or?
I have no problem at all doing those.
Okay. Any other questions, board members? We're good. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
Have a seat. I'm following my list. William Wilkie? I don't know. Bill Bell? I see you back there. Mr. Peter, might as well come on up.
Whoever did, come on down.
Come on down, I know.
Well, my name is Peter Van Gogh. Head around.
Here you are. So another question should be a surprise now because you've heard them all.
Tell me your curveball.
No, I'm not going to throw you a curveball. They might throw you. They're in charge of curveballs. I'm in charge of the routine. So why are you interested in the supervisor position?
Well, I live here. Uh, I've been involved in well, the last ten years following different things, trying to make an influence. I've got some ideas and give us both to like water is a big one. I've done a lot of homework on it. If anybody's interested. A little bit on financing too. But we'll get to that when you get to that question. I, I think I can help the touch.
Okay.
To sort of, I guess.
Okay. What experiences have you had with township or city government?
Well, a little bit. I'll start with the animal ordinances. Uh, we have an animal order. It says I'm working with Sprout, Jeremy Andrews. Uh, we came to the decision because my property used to be in City Valley, Mountain, Bedford Township. And to that process, and I told you, we were gonna focus on the future, not the past. But, um, I just, instead of made the decision, instead of me coming here, trying to work on the the, uh, animal ordinance in Bedford Township, that I would work city. Because I'd also had, I'd run for a city counselor, the city commission. Uh, I used to work hard time with, uh, Deb Owens. She was city clerk. And, uh, I just ran into her Saturday too. She was one of our guests. And, uh, we kind of went over, and then later she was a commissioner. Um, she lives right on the border of Battle Creek and so she's followed the whole evolution of everything here. But, um, I would stop my business periodically uh, when I could and, uh, work in the clerk's office downtown. And she had, it was a lot of odd job stuff, but it was really, um, I learned a lot.
Weren't you on a, a Bedford?
I was, uh, there at the ZVA for a short time.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Yeah, you're on the ZVA here. Okay. Good, good. What experience do you have as a manager or leader of an organization?
Extensive, uh, within, in the Navy, I advanced rather rapidly. And there were times that I was in charge of people. I had, I trained reserves was my main mission and, uh, this was the seventies. I was very young and my rank was quite underneath. Most of the reserves that would come in to train for the two weeks. So, you know, here as you know, at duty trade or at the duty training. A lot of them were several pay grades above me. They thought they'd come up boardship and push me around. I was full time. I lived it night and day and I knew my stuff. I was sharp. I took pride in the school that I went to in Orlando, which doesn't exist anymore, but, uh, uh, from that, uh, I was, I worked for the Northwest largest landscaping company. We didn't do any houses or anything like that. And my crews would change from day to day. I had to get together with the other foreman at the end of these long summer days. You know, I worked year round, but, um, to discuss what equipment needed to go where, what did we need the next day to do these commercial accounts? And, uh, at one time I got this thing in my head. I wanted to get all this Portland work and I wanted to get all five nineteen headquarters. Veggie had five different places and they were not standing. And it was just, I could say I had all five Veggie accounts. I did, um, Intel Corporation, we took care of them. I had no idea what they did. It was just a big building. We did their landscape. Uh, so I had my crew would go from five to fifteen, twenty. We'd have sometimes seven truckloads of people and equipment. Uh, we did condos and restaurants and things like that. Uh, see later, oh, um, uh, I worked at Caipari Carl, which was a German owned company out in Forcaster. I was, um, oh, what do they call it? Cop steward, uh, on the, the bargaining committee. I was part of the AFL-CIO.
Okay. Good. Tell me about your experience working with the public.
The public, well, I learned a long time ago that one of the universally worldwide, one of the greatest fears people have is speaking in front of their peers. Uh, and then I've walked up to her quite a few times. And I said, I, I think, um, well, maybe I have made some changes. I hopefully I made good changes. Uh, putting the past behind too is, uh, our, our last supervisor go. Uh, we, we weren't in the greatest of, uh, rapport for each other. When she got elected, she didn't eat antac to death. What I said at that meeting when she announced the resignation, I meant very sincerely. And you guys have been doing a great job and not kind of butter young. I actually mean it.
But you also work with the public on Saturdays, don't you?
Oh, oh.
Don't forget that. Don't forget that.
Yeah, that's kind of been a pet project of mine. It's, uh, we started, I'll give you a real quick thing. I don't know if you guys know, we started out here, right out here and we had, I had a box of asparagus, uh, a lady that we've never seen again. I had a box of donuts and, or no cupcakes and then my wife and her stuff and, uh, boogers, we just kept plugging away at it.
Okay, good. Have any experience with capital improvement projects?
Not so much hands on, however, I have. When I told you I got into water, when the water issue became something here. I, I want, and just so you know, no personal interest in this because we just replaced a drink of the cost of twelve thousand dollars this year. So this wouldn't affect me so much, but we have that water need right down the road. I personally believe should be expended. Uh, City of Battle Creek has, uh, I started to learn when I was running for, uh, commission. Uh, I studied TIP financing, I sense for tax incremental financing. And they have VC TIP, uh, which is Battle Creek. I don't know if it's association or administration or whatever A is. But, uh, they, that is a Pandora's box. So you have to be very careful how you use it. It has slowly replaced bonds, municipal bonds as a way of financing projects like water. Um, there's that. So I'd be happy, even if you choose somebody else to give you the benefit of my homework on that subject.
Okay. What qualities do you have that make you a good fit for the supervisor position?
Well, I, uh, in, in, in college, they teach you a lot of times the, uh, the box, the temple, how to do things. I've, I'm more of a self-taught. And I've learned sometimes you have to step outside that box. It, because there's no one size fits all on everything. Um, I'm kind of industrious and, um, give you an example, besides in the Navy, there's, I got the position of scrounger. That's nothing that you apply for. That's nothing that one day they say you're the scrounger. It's you show up and you get it done. It's, uh, looking for materials. So I'm the guy that jumped in the pickup truck and drove across the river to the shipyard. One time when we needed, it's called diamond cups. And I went out, I went and talked to the, and I was just a kid, eighteen years old, but I came back with a truckload of diamond cups. So it made me the scrounger.
You made you the scrounger. Do you have any experience working with budgets, especially government budgets?
I wouldn't say government budgets, but I did start a couple of companies. One was a trucking company. The other was, uh, the most extensive budgeting in there. And for a deregulated industry, that's a lot of, lot of, uh, regulations. Um, budgets, and then we started when my, my wife, we started a store, a retail store up on Capitol Avenue at the same time. I'm doing, I'm doing oil and trucking and, uh, I own the trucks and trailers and it was my name, Van Gogh Express. And, uh, we had, uh, Charles Lewis Airports was on Capitol Avenue in what area they call Old Lakeview. We hired people. I did the, uh, my accountant just gave me some forms on days and you're smart enough, here's how you do payroll deduction. So I'm kind of self taught how to do payroll deduction for a employee. Uh, I have one kickback from the IRS and that was three cents that I held too much from, uh, a clerk named Nancy Deke.
Okay. Okay.
A little bit.
All right. How would you build consensus among board members related to a difficult topic that they, that they need to vote on?
Build consensus, I guess I'd have to study what the issue was. Um, hope I make, could, could see it as clearly as possible. And sometimes you have to step away from something, step back up to it to see it clearly. This discussion, I, I don't know. It's a difficult question for me.
It's a hard question.
Yes, it is.
Tell me how you handle stress and how do you stay calm under pressure?
I don't, no. It depends on the situation. O- o- obviously, it, it's, uh, it's, it's in evolution even as we sit here. But, uh, to give you some examples though, it's, it's, it depends on the si- the, the level if you're okay. There was, there was these people living on the bridge at the end of the penetrator and I kind of came out and I started bringing a wirewood, getting a little bit involved. And then this, this group of do-gooders and then another individual who, who rallied, they put them in a house up on Frisbee. But, um, particularly after the bridge carts got loaded because the liquor store down the street would bring it up as groceries and buying booze. And I would get the call when the fights would break out in the house and I would show up. It wasn't the two organizations that were paying for their house. It was me that would show up. And I would talk to them, try to calm them down, separate them when it was necessary. I would like to close down that liquor store given my choice, but.
Do you have any experience writing requests for proposals or negotiating contracts?
I did a little negotiated contract. Oh, yeah. Like, um, not the biggest contract probably I ever did personally was with, uh, Guardian Industries in Downey. Uh, that's where I formed Van Gogh Express LLC. Uh, it was, uh, six and a half years it covered our everything, everything I went to Michigan with for six and a half years was guarded products. And then every back off or every return, everything that sent me back was an individual uh, contract, uh, usually you set up uh, I call it like an umbrella contract. Then you operate all the individual load, transportation loads out of that. And of course we had our store, um, assignments and stuff like that.
Good. Kind of related to staying calm under pressure, but how do you handle conflict resolution and especially when dealing with the public, when a public has a complaint?
Okay, the public's a little bit different and I've learned, uh, some from mistakes. Um, you all feel like making mistakes. Biggest, the mistake itself is not generally the worst thing you can do. It's not learning from that mistake is the worst thing you can do. But I'm getting something recently at our market down here. A gentleman showed up and I'm not sure through the operation of his mind, um, he kind of pushed things around. It was an incredibly hot day and I just didn't really feel like dealing with him. I was kind of probably let him get away with more than I should have. Second week he shows up again, uh, he doesn't want to set his stand up where everyone else is. Uh, he went up to the side and realized when close to his car because tip go didn't smoke. Well, then he'd open the door and it would just go walking down and you, you, some of you have been there and you know the environment we tried to create there. And so when he showed up that second week, I said, you and I need to talk. And I tried to get through it. He was just very belligerent with me. And, uh, then I finally said, you know, you don't understand, you don't tell me where you're going to set your stuff up. I tell you where you can set yourself up. Well, then I, then I'm a racist and I'm pushy and everything like that. And I said, well, now you have to leave. And I didn't get upset with him or something, but I said, you're going to have to leave now. And I said, this is private property. So we have the right to tell you to go. And fifteen minutes later, one of our vendors came up and he'd been on social with corporate, social media. They were just blasting. So I learned a little lesson from social media. So I stayed off it. I didn't respond what some of the vendors did and who had witnessed what had happened. And it just wound itself up. Um, I don't know if that answers your question.
That does, that does. Yeah, you've been in it. You've been in it. Um, do you have any business or personal conflicts that prevent you from devoting your full attention to this position?
Man, I survived to the age where the government gives me a hunk of money every month to just stay alive. And that's what I'm doing. No, I don't have a doubt. I wasn't even really thinking about this until, uh, I got a phone call. It was kind of asked to think about doing this. There was a roll around. I said, I, I think I could do that. That would contribute. I think I'm a long shot, but.
Okay, all right. Board members, anybody want to start? Questions?
I think that you can answer for me. Peter, I would like to ask, how do you plan to keep residents informed and involved in towns, township decisions?
I'll just keep them informed as well in.
In township decisions. The residents, sorry. How would you plan on keeping the residents um, informed and involved in towns, township decisions?
Positions, do you mean like situations, are there things, information?
Yeah, to keep them informed of things.
Um, well, of course, we have currently from social media, I think we can probably put more information out on that. Um, we've, you've decided that pre-b, that it's, it's a one way it goes out. It doesn't come back in. If I can elaborate on your question a little bit.
Go ahead.
That's a great idea for, uh, getting people using some of our parks cheap. I know they do stuff cheap. I don't want to get kids in the summertime into the parks. I talked about the water. I was a great idea to the water. And if you don't pick me, I sure hope for you pick, will, will at least tap my mind a little bit and take it for what it's worth because I've made a lot of phone calls to a lot of other supervisors in Michigan. Cause I've made a lot of phone calls to a lot of other supervisors in Michigan a year and a half ago. Some great companies.
Thank you.
So going back to if you had a problem that you were going to solve, say the water issue, um, how, how would you approach that? What's your, what's your problem solving process look like?
Oh, well, one is, is, uh, I worked with a guy one time, he had a master's degree in, uh, portico from Arizona State. And we called him the Bucky Guy. And, uh, with, uh, we, we would periodic, the other foreman at this company, we'd take our different issues of plants turning yellow or something like that to him. And once I, he told me about, he says, you know, it's not what you know, how to do, your memory of how to do all this stuff. It's knowing or being able to figure out where to go to get the information that you need. And this one, when I was thinking of water, I called, I, I remembered an article I had read, I don't know when, about actually township and they were putting in their own wells. So I called, it turns out the same supervisors there. So he told me all about their water issue. Another good one was, uh, School Craft Township. So I probably talked to him for like 45 minutes. They're bringing, instead of bringing it down out of Kalamazoo, what School Craft Village did, they're coming out of St. Joe County using their well field. And if I may really link, so we had this coming here, we have the city's, um, water treatment facility, but that would not, the, the problem with the well is its initial cost. But we have already up at, uh, St. Mary's Lake, they do a well that keeps the lake well up. So I don't know why another well isn't feasible, cause once the well's in, it's just maintenance fees and then you're not, uh, um, you're independent of the, the city. Say we're using part of the township with city water off the name and we have a well to serve the city. For instance, the village, if something happened and we decided we didn't want to deal with that, we're shifting into full-time the well. Or save a second ones, we, with that infrastructure, I don't know its feasibility, I'd have to talk to an engineer to find that out, but, uh, we have Tom Sprowback here, if you remember when Mr. McKinley was here, and I know it was a short time and everything, but, um, he was talking about putting a finance committee together, Mr. Sprow had volunteered to be part of that. And he served for, I don't know how many years, Mr. Sprow was a supervisor here. And that's a welcome information. And people that work in stuff like that, especially in, for, in the public aspect, they love to talk about their accomplishments and just as much learn from the failures. That's how they, that's why your, your aircraft are so safe right now is because they studied every accident.
Good, thank you. That's all right.
He's answered everything I had.
Any other questions for the board? Thank you, Peter.
Uh, thank you for, uh, long distance, it's the same as the last person.
Oh, okay. We're doing well.
I'm hearing the cadence is going.
You want to do another one or you want to take a break?
Okay.
I'll take a break?
Probably.
Okay. Ten minute break? We're going to take a 10-minute break. And back, I see Randy's here. We'll, we'll start with Randy. Back, back at it. Randy, you're up, man. What we have is a set of questions that are common to everybody that we ask first. And then with all the board members will ask additional questions based on your responses. We're trying to keep each applicant to about a total of 30 minutes. According to my timekeeper here, we came close on two of them, what?
Fifty-six seconds on both of them.
Okay, well, we're doing pretty good then. Oh, yeah. Go ahead, you can explain it.
Okay, we just wanted you to be aware, you weren't here when we discussed this. So this was kind of an interim position for 10 months, I think it broke to 10. Um, and then it would go to an election in November. So we just wanted to make sure we're upfront, yeah, next November, thank you. Uh, we just want to make sure you're aware of that before we start the interview and see if you still want to proceed, if you're still interested in that.
I kind of knew that coming in.
Perfect, thank you so much.
All right, you ready? Here we go. Why are you interested in the supervisor position?
Well, I've been out here twenty-five years. Going six months this year, but some, a member of my family has been here since the late 50s. And I inherited that house. And so I grew up out here in Bedford, when, you know, it's part of my childhood commitment to this community is because I've always been a part of. And I've all, I feel like I'm a person with a skillset to bring normal feedback to our community. And, uh, not, we'll say make it the way it used to be, I'm going to say make it the way it ought to be.
Okay. Good. Now, some of my questions for someone like you, it's going to be a little silly, but it's okay, I'm going to ask them anyway. What experiences do you have with township or city government?
Well, I was two times a trustee out here, one time a supervisor out here. Um, prior to that, I was the superintendent of streets and parks for the city of Battle Creek. And so therefore, um, I've been in public service for quite a long time. Um, now bachelor degree in public service administration. And so, uh, it's been my vocation.
Okay. Cool. And kind of piggybacking on that, um, what experience do you have as a manager or leader of an organization?
City of Battle Creek, I was a foreman.
Okay.
General Foreman, Superintendent. I was president of the Battle Creek Supervisors Association for 12 years. Negotiating four contracts with the city of Battle Creek. Um, here, my experience obviously was with different organizations and, and contracts that I signed here.
Okay. Good. Naturally, this next question will sound silly too. How much experience do you have working with the public? It sounds extensive.
I started working for the city of Battle Creek in 1967.
Okay.
So that's a few years of, of meeting the public.
And you were supervisor here and trustee here, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. What's your experience with capital improvement projects?
Well, here we had, uh, water down in the, um, in the village. Uh, we had, um, this one disappointed me too. We had a, a opportunity for a, a dollar match to redo our road on Morgan to cut that hill out of there. And, uh, it, it was through B Cats. I don't know how that fell through, cause I didn't win my turn to see it through. But that was a little disappointment there. Um, obviously, we've had, um, a good, well, I had a good relationship with the city, so therefore the people that had different departments like streets and, and, and in martial too. We had, uh, a report that allowed us to be serviced with, uh, how do you say it, uh, a respect for each other.
Okay. Okay. Um, what qualities do you have that would make you a good fit for the supervisor position again?
Well, because I operate like this. Now, this is as smart as all of us. And so everybody has got something to say and I'm a good listener. And my skillset is, is to, uh, make the person see if they call you, they got a concern. It may not be big and it may not be important to you, but it's doggone important to them as they went call. And everybody who calls you is a taxpayer. So, you know, I, I had experiences where, um, a person would call me because they, a squirrel was smashed out in front of our house. But they pay taxes and we got people out there and go get the squirrel. It's important to that lady, she didn't want to see the dead squirrel every day. So those are the type of things that foster a relationship.
Okay. You obviously have some experience working with budgets. Tell me about the budget experience with Randy.
Well, you know, here, I didn't, when I was a supervisor, I didn't get into it too much. I knew what was in it, but I had no active, uh, you know, my, it was not my role to get into it, except when it came time for the end of year. What did we have, what could we find? When I was at the city of Battle Creek, I actually did run a budget, $3.6 million for streets and parks. The concept is a little bit of the same here. But the, uh, the, the way we operate, the supervisor really shouldn't be into the budget. He can know what's in the budget. He should know what's going to come up that we need to have some money for, or do we have money for? Working in it, having access to it, getting online, getting in there and making any, you know.
Obviously you have experience with public meetings. How do you like to run a public meeting?
I like to run the public meetings by having engagement, I like it orderly. But I don't like it so tight that people feel like, what did I come here for? Nobody cares what I'm saying. We do, or I do. And I make myself available and take you serious.
Okay. Next question has to do with building consensus. Um, how would you build consensus among board members related to a difficult topic that needs to be voted on?
I just got to be telling you, no, it's not anything about that at all. And so therefore, you know, when you're the lead, you have to think about your role, command. Sometime is, is, you have to make a decision because you are the leader. But sometimes you make the decision because of consultants, you consult with people. And sometimes it's just pure consensus. But you keep, you always have to take all away all your options and listen to advice. You're not the smartest guy in the room. Somebody has something to contribute and then you take that and then you also have to make everybody in here that has a, a role in how our township functions, listen to them and involve them. You should never exclude anybody.
How do you handle stress and the ability to stay calm under pressure?
I don't. One, two, three, take a deep breath. Then I open up my ears. See, sometimes the frustration comes because you already have perceived opinion about something and you're not listening to what they're saying. And you see, you don't really have to be adversarial and disagreeable. And because we've already taken a, a position before we listened to the, see, the other guy might have a good point. So I always look forward to see, I don't really put myself in another person's shoes, but I do look at where they're coming from. And I don't always agree, although I give them a chance to agree with me from the first beginning, but it don't always work out that way, but.
Tell me about your experience writing requests for proposals or negotiating contracts. You mentioned a few already, but.
Well, the last one I did was with this service that we have with the Battle Creek Police Department. Uh, that happened when I was here. And, uh, I quite twisted their arms down from, they wanted 1.1 million dollars, but they didn't get it. Uh, since then, I don't know what the report is. But I intend to make it good again. And the way you negotiate that is just like the old Ben Franklin look with all the good things, with all the bad things for me and for you. The bottom line, if you have a good report, they want a service. Whoever, it don't have to be the Battle Creek Police Department, it could be the people that provide the phones, the people who do the internet and what have you. You have to have a working relationship with them. But you have to make them understand, you didn't do me a favor by opening up this phone company. I did you a favor by picking you to do my service. So you have to keep that report going and that's what we call relationships. You've got long-term relationships and short-term relationships. Short-term relationships is that you're selling something out here in front of the township hall and you might not never see that person again. But a person who's serving to you on a contract of two, three years, that's a long-term relationship. So you should make sure that you treat them in a way that they want, to give you good service. But you also make them feel, look, I have other options too.
Good, okay. You kind of answered this partially earlier, but I'm going to ask anyway. How would you handle conflict resolution with one of your public, um, members?
Well, I was a guy when I was in this job, I was here every day. I came here for every day for two years and then never take a day off. I, I took the days off that the building was closed, but I didn't take, God, God blessed me, I didn't get sick. And I'm already on vacation because I was retired, so there was no problem for me to be here. Now, how does that fit in? See, in order to get anywhere with people, you have to be able to be there. See them face to face, look them in the eye. They send you a, a, a phone message, call them back. And make that a priority. Check all your messages, be here, make yourself accessible. So as far as conflict, um, I thought I resolved a lot. Now, it didn't mean, mean everybody liked me, but I gave you a chance. Do you like me?
Good. Do you have any business or personal conflicts that prevent you from devoting your full time to this position?
No.
Okay. Okay, you got through my major list. So now it's kind of up to the board if they have any additional questions. Anybody want to start, Chen?
Yep, thank you for sharing that squirrel story, I love that. And like you said, that's a small thing to somebody, but a big thing to her. Um, and that's how we posture that relationship, keeping that moving and, and just doing those little things are big things. We need to move better forward, so I appreciate you coming in, thank you.
No, I don't have anything for you. I have one more. You did a two-term trustee position here? Okay, and then the supervisor position, how did you transition, I guess, from supervisor to trustee to supervisor? Was that a big transition for you or did you just kind of fall into that?
Um, I didn't. But if you. But the opportunity came and I felt like it took some, at the time, we were just going through a period in the township that, that, um, bumpy. And I just felt like with my wisdom, age, experience, that I could just move out the waters. And so therefore, when the opportunity came to run, I ran. Um, it wasn't my first aspiration, I, I enjoyed being the trustee. Um, but I felt like the township needs somebody to take the runner and it worked out for me.
Thank you.
So now you're gone. Scott?
Uh, yeah, we've got a lot of big projects coming up in Bedford. We've got a, an aging fleet of fire apparatus. We've got a station that, um, needs to be completed up in the village. Um, whose, whose role do you perceive as being responsible for the budget and helping to set the, set the tone of the township in that direction?
Well, fire department, unless it's changed, has their own budget. Uh, it's always the supervisor's role as the steward and guardianship of the monies of this township and how, how it should be paid in this person, with the permission of the board and the, and then the citizens. But now, I'm glad you spoke about the fire department because everybody knows it came to these meetings, you know, I'm a big advocate for the fire service and our firefighters in this township. It was me who implemented for them to get the see through the walls, equipment and all that kind of stuff. Uh, because I feel like part of the township, especially ours, the real aging township. I want to, I always have feeling on our fire department to have every gizmo gadget of whatever. I wanted, I always have feeling on our fire department to have every gizmo gadget of whatever you have, the services. Uh, we got older people and I'm one of them. And if, if it takes heat sensors to see me in there in that smoke or something, I want our fire department to have. Now, as far as that fire department out there, we, when I was here, we're in motion. To rebuild out there or do something, but I don't know where the bones, after all these years, there's still nothing done out there. Anyway, if I was to get back here, we would address that. Also, yeah, one thing, you know, my aesthetics is very important. And what I mean by aesthetics, you see that sign out there that says substation? I implemented that because part of the contract that we signed with the police department. And when I was here, they came here. They came and met here once a month. It was actually a substation. I don't know if they still come here, but they will come here if I come back. Now, why is that important? Because you want to feel safe. You want the community to see. What we're paying our money for. We see the police, it says substation. That's aesthetic to have them here, just to have a meeting here, but it, but when your taxpayers see it, see it, actually see it, makes you feel a little better. You know that there's a police officer assigned to Bedford. But is that the same as if you come down here to pay your tax or bill or something and you see four or five police cars out here and actually see some police in here? So that's the kind of stuff is important.
Thank you. Do you have questions?
I do have questions, okay.
Um, you said that you were very interested in buying new product for the fire department and doing these kind of. Different things that you would like done. How? How? Do you? How would we pay for those? If it's not in the budget. How would we go forward, forward? Would you be applying for grants or?
Well, actually, that's the way we always do it. The last fire engine that you got was a steel branch. And it was also a repeat business with places who make those. Type of sales and so forth. If it's not in the budget, but you know what? When I was here, it was in the budget. Though, and, and those firefighters, you don't really, they, they watch their budget. And you don't really ask for something pie in the sky that you know you can't, you can't buy two new papers. And you, and you don't have enough to pay for one, but sometimes there's deals. Like the deal. With the two command, uh, SUVs that they drive now. I worked a deal with the car, I get two, we get them for this amount. Which was way below, but they had two to go. It was sort of like the inventory that was left over. I wanted them to have those. Vehicles because again, it's telling you, it looks like we are professional people. That's why you wear uniforms when you go to IBM, where you wear uniforms at McDonald's. When you work for the city of Township of Bedford, you should be that professional. That was what those SUVs were for. And then also they carry equipment and what have you too.
Thank you.
Most of my questions been answered, but just out of curiosity, if, uh. We did, uh, point two, would you run again in November?
Uh, probably so.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, Randy. Thank you much. Have a seat. Mr. Wilkie. You're up, man. A little early. Sorry. I called you, left you a few messages. I don't know what they got.
I am sorry, is there?
That's okay. We're running ahead of schedule, so. Again, I, I think you heard everything we talked about with Randy about. This is a, like a little over a one-year position. And if you want to stay in the position, you'll have to run, um, as a candidate. And I believe Joyce told us the decision has to be made to run in the spring, even though the election's not till. November of twenty-six. So just wanted to let you know that. Pretty much what we're doing here is. We're trying to keep everything within thirty minutes for each applicant. I ask the same set of questions. Um, every single applicant, sometimes they're worded a little differently. Um, and then the board has their own set of questions as well. So. First question off the block, why are you interested in the supervisor position?
Well, over the years, let me see, over the years, I don't know, I mean, Dust Jordan and, uh. And all the ones that Ben and, and, uh. Tom Small, Tom, you know, Tom Frowder. And it was a, just a good township and he, he running just like, it was just like, I don't know, he just runs so smooth. And you come over, he's always laid back, just, what's happening, Wilkie, and we'd be just talking, he just reminisced, just a good old guy, just like seeing. Kind of go back to that way. And then after Charlie Kirk had the assassination of him and stuff like that, I thought, you know what? I seen that in the shopper guy and I thought, you know what, I'm gonna, I think I'm, my little get political, so I'm getting into some of this stuff. I've been to these meetings, I've complained about things and stuff like that. And I pursue different things. I've been on different stuff and, you know, pursue different projects and things and follow through with them, so. My interest, you know, if I get on something I really like, I just try to stay with it, learn everything I can about it, you know?
All right. Um, what experiences do you have with township or city government? In terms of holding office or running or whatever?
I have never, this is my first time right here, to be flat on.
Okay, okay.
First time I've ever hanging it out, do, you know? I've done business with cities and townships and stuff like that.
Right, okay. What experience do you have as a manager and or leader of an organization? Or company?
Well, let me see, I've, I started my, I had a bomb defense company over in the corn. I've been at it since nineteen eighty-seven. I've been over there since ninety-two, that was a burned out fire building. I don't know if you remember that time where I lived. And me and my dad, we purchased it and, and I put it in there. I've done that since then, so I've been at it for forty something years there. Dig a lot of rocks, a lot of roots and saw a lot of fence and met a lot of nice people.
Okay.
And so I've been, you know, I've had that project. I've, uh, I'm an ironworker. I've, uh, done different things for ironworkers. I got into nuclear power. That was quite a challenging thing for me, especially being the age I was. My daughter's in school and she said, Dad, this school, this college is terrible. And I said, hang in there, Lacy. I said. It'll be worth it at the end, you know, and I'm over there thinking, man. There's given, you know, you used to, you look at this, you just knew your pipeline, the Lake Michigan, I think, man. I gotta get in there, I gotta get in there. And you go to school every day, you know, it's like. And testing and you have to pass these tests to get in there, so. It was quite a deal getting in there and trying to be, and being very safe in there, stuff like that, because of. I, what I was doing there, if I had an accident, we would, we would have heard about it basically. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you own, you own a fence company, so how much experience do you have working with the public?
Well, a lot, a lot. And when I, over the years, I mean, I used to work in parking equipment and I lost my job there and I went to machine shops and they were. Paying me six, seven, eight dollars an hour, drive to Kalamazoo, you know, and having to read, raising two kids and being married and. Just wasn't working out, you know, and I was in the, went into fencing, you know, and I thought, I'm just gonna stay with this, you know? And, uh. I don't know, I worked, you lost me there. I'm sorry.
But you did, because you own a fence company, you were working.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, all that time, you know, then I started, like I said, then I went to, uh. My brother-in-law owned Modern Transit Mix, I went over there. I worked in the office, I worked, I drove a truck. And then I got to, uh, I used to go and talk to. A million dollar jobs at Calhogs and stuff, the different contractors and stuff like that, selling concrete. We had a salesman that was trained. I was never trained as, as a salesman or the, the fire. But I used to, there was a time, we were one Sunday, we were busy, ever other days, they were sitting around. Doing this, so I had a lot of time to look at concrete books, so I would read, I read a lot on concrete, I know a lot about it. And it's just something I tackled at that time. I went to work for Duckworth Brothers. So, you know, working that hard, so I'm just saying, I, I poured concrete, I've done fencing, I've been an ironworker. My kids say, Dad, you know everybody. So, I mean, I just, I know a lot of people.
So, in all your jobs that you've done, um. Do you have experience working with, uh, proposed or working on a capital improvement project?
You have a certain point, you and some other individuals, you know, and stuff like that, and meetings and, and talking about different things and how this is gonna go. And most of the time in fencing and stuff like that's what I'm, you know, an expert in.
That's not your primary yet.
And then I'm a certified rigger and a nuclear industry too, so, but you know, that's a.
Okay. So what qualities do you think you have that makes you a good fit to be a supervisor?
Oh, I mean, I don't know, I've, I've been a supervisor of a lot of different crews and I've worked for Mark Hire shoe. Wragge Fluke and I've worked through Switzer, I've. Worked at cause, I've worked at posts, I've been everywhere, working for different companies and engineers and architects and. And things like that. I mean, I worked with them, you know, that's all I can say. I really haven't really say, put my final fingers on a budget, you know? St. Mary's Lake, I'm a, man, a. Health and safety out there for twenty-five, thirty years. Out there. And I've been on that board, we have talked and I, I earned about, I learned about everything.
Okay. What experience do you have working with budgets, especially government budgets?
I really, I, to be honest with you, I really haven't. I worked with the St. Mary's Lake, what we do out there, you know, our little budget we had for a weekend, what, it used to be only a few thousand, now it's more. Up there a lot more because we control some more, it's more expensive.
But you owned a, a business, so.
Yeah, 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 budget on it. Yeah, yeah, like I said, well, I mean, I've been a business eighty-seven, I've never, I never run the black yet, so.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I should have been a red, and you got, got me nervous here. I never run the red anyway. And I always paid all my bills, so, you know, and my, my bill is still mine, so, you know.
Okay. How about, uh, experience running a public meeting? Have you ever ran a public meeting?
Oh, no, I used to have, I'd be scared to speak.
But you've run meetings before.
But I run meetings, yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Tell me about running meetings. Have you been in charge or are you attending the meeting?
Well. Now, let me see, like if we're, I say, at the nuclear power plant, we're over there, you know, we. We would grab a, I'd have a group of people, okay, Wilkie, you're in charge of, because I, I was on the aid crew, which we were taking this thing apart. Okay? And I, and we would be talking about things and how this project is gonna go. And how far we, you know, I had a crane guy in there, we had the operator. I had operators in there, we had everybody in there that was gonna be involved, all their ironworkers. And mill rights and stuff involved setting this on top, this air conditioning, air conditioning on top, on top of the. The one of the silos there. And we were about to spend fuel systems or waters, wasn't, just everything, you're just. All talking about what's gonna happen, who's gonna be doing what. And how it's gonna go, and then we try to go in and do it. We come back out and have meetings and say, okay, how did this go? You know, what do we need to change and things like that, you know? And we always have the meetings too, if there's any problems, we'll say. Individuals, you haven't anything at all, anything that you think something's gonna go wrong, you make it safe and we all come out same time.
Okay, right.
Safety is the main thing for me, you know?
How would you build consensus among board members? That are trying to resolve a difficult topic that needs to be voted on?
Well, just like everything else, we're all gonna sit out, we're all gonna sit there as board members, we're gonna talk about it, everybody's gonna have their own opinions and. We gotta come to some type of, uh. Commitment to each other, you know, and trust. That's why I think trust is a big thing between on boards and people, you know?
Okay, all right. So how do you personally handle stress and the ability to stay calm under pressure?
Everybody gets upset, I guess, you know, I mean, after being a business I've done and things, and things I've thanked you. You have a problem as far as, uh, an automotive or anything like that, you know, you're working on something, I, I've been, I've got, maybe show you a letter I have here. And then, uh, as far as the ironworkers are your problem, and as far as fencing, I mean, I've dug more rocks and roots out of holes and I can, you can beat yourself to death on them. And you can take your frustrations out of them all you want. But the harder you hit them, they're not gonna go anywhere sometimes, you know what I mean? So you kind of, you kind of use your brain, say, okay, settle down here, let's take it right here. Let's figure out how we're gonna get this out where there's water. We're gonna use a rock bar, wood bar, how we're gonna do to tackle this, and I've done. Thousands of them, you know, running the concrete, different things, power lines, you know, just. You just gotta, I just wait till I attack, have that problem and I sit down and try to tackle it, you know? And now I try to find somebody that does, or I call somebody or find, you know, what's going on.
Tell me about your experience. If you're written any requests for proposals or negotiated any contracts?
I really haven't really negotiated any contracts, you know what I'm saying? As far as your son, as far as just for fencing contracts and things like that, you know? Two kind of different contractors and stuff and architecture, prints and things like that.
Okay. How do you personally handle conflict resolution with the general public? So a public person comes to you, one of our voters. And says there's a problem and obviously they're upset. How would you handle that?
Well, I think the best thing to do is be cool with them. Tell them that they, ask them how they're doing and see how their day is going. And just try to fill them out, talk to them and calm down and see what they have to say. And do the, do some type of investigation, you know? And, uh, try to get back to them and be equal with them, whether I'm gonna be fair with you or fair with you or fair with you on the same thing, equal all the way through. You know, that's why, what I think, we gotta, definitely about if I, if you get this job, you gotta be fair with everybody starting out. And it's just like. Coming in saying, hey, you got this apartment? I mean, I don't know it. What do you do? That's why I wanna know. And what can I do to help you? What can I do to make your job better? You know, why do you need to make your job better? You know? And then, you know, go from there. I mean, it's just like board meetings, you know, like I said. And St. Mary's Lake, all sitting around arguing about different things and we've had everything come around that thing out there. The whole years.
Do you have any business or personal conflicts that would prevent you from devoting your full time to this position?
No, I have to quit fencing, but yeah, yeah, I have nothing, nothing's gonna bother.
You're willing to do that? Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. I now open it up for the rest of the board to ask questions. Anybody care to start?
I will. As an interested citizen of Bedford Township who has applied to the supervisor position, can you please give me three examples where you have made a difference in our community?
Well, it helped with safety in St. Mary's Lake. We've never had an accident out there and no one's ever been killed out there. Thank God, you know, anybody got some questions? Let me see, uh. Oh, well, I see, I, the Boy Scouts down at the park down here. I was, uh, I went down there, he was an Eagle Scout and they called me about, hey, would you, this kid wants to Eagle Scout? I was a scout, yeah, I'll help him out. We went down there. And then we, Brickside Park, did some fencing down there, he got his Eagle badge from the community project. I had the Boy Scouts, the community projects, I, I mean, I was out the air guard out there to the. They called for what? The, the two, two guys just recently didn't have no. Had no next to pen, nothing like that, and they called for people they needed out there. I say, hey, I'm gonna be there this Thursday or wherever it was, or Friday, and I said, I'm gonna be there, and I was out there and it was, I'm glad I went, there was two or three hundred people out there. You know, I mean, I'm a kind of hard guy, you know, I'm really being nice. You know, that's the best way to do it, start out with, ain't we, right? And I've dealt with people being, I mean, I've been on jobs, don't talk to that guy, he's a. Whatever this guy, he's a mean guy, or whatever, and I mean, I ended up being buddies with him and shooting the shit with him and. You know what I mean? I can, I can get along with anybody, whether you're a rough guy or. Bad, bad guy, or, you know, whatever, I can get along with you, you know? I try to tolerate everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm, I'm good actually, yes, sir, thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Wow, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
He passed my name, I mean, that, that. This is somebody who's gotta stool me. Many years ago. This is about me, you know, you gotta give me, I'm saying, you gotta give me a change, I mean, I don't know them that much. But I'm willing to learn and I, I enjoy that.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
I hope that's.
At this time. The board. Would, will be deliberating. Because the, uh, interviewees, so to speak. But I, I have a comment to make to my board members. Before we, we talk about this. And. My comment is. I'm very uncomfortable deciding. On a supervisor. Without our clerk here. I'm, I'm extremely uncomfortable about this. I mean, we do have a quorum and we could make the decision tonight. But I'm, I'm very uncomfortable making that decision. We have time. To the next scheduled board meeting on October.
I think it's fourteen.
Fourteen. Where we could. Delay the decision, allow Joyce to watch the video of the interviews. Delay the decision, allow Joyce to watch the video of the interviews. And postpone the decision, but. I'm just uncomfortable and I just wanna know what the board feels about this.
I'm gonna agree with that.
Yes, I believe she should be here as well. Her voice should be heard.
Yeah.
Okay.
And are we, we have the forty-five days. Is it the fourteenth or the fifteenth?
Yeah, I know it's gonna be closer.
It's like the forty-fourth day, I think it is.
Yeah, the fifteenth is the final day.
Final, I think so.
Cause it's, it's not just business days, it's all.
Calendar.
Right.
Calendar days, so we are.
She resigned on the. On the first, so.
We're in that timeline, as long as we're double checking.
I thought we would be in it.
And if we're not, we could call a special meeting if we had to.
So.
As long as we're in those days. The forty-five.
I guess what I'm asking is, can we table the resolution until the fourteenth? October fourteenth? Is that something, somebody like to make a motion on?
I'll make a motion. I'm gonna have to table. Until the fourteenth.
But if we table it, isn't that till the end of the meeting? Isn't that still a discussion we have yet?
No, postpone it. It's postponing it.
Okay, okay.
Well, depends on how the motion is made.
How do you wanna make the motion?
I want to make the motion to put it on. The next agenda to vote on, yes, or to.
The next scheduled.
Yes, when. We have everyone that is with us.
Well, the clerk has returned. We won't necessarily have everyone because.
I'm sorry.
I have a conflict.
Yeah, he has a conflict, but.
Okay, oh, well, I'd like to do it when everybody can be here. You have a conflict, you can't, you're not gonna be on the fourteenth?
No, I, I let everybody know the last.
Why, meaning?
Okay, so what about a few days, what, what's your schedule before that? I wanna make sure we're fair, that everybody can be here.
I won't be here the Thursday. Through Monday.
Thursday through Monday, okay. Well, then let's schedule a date that we can figure out everybody could be here. I would prefer to do that if everyone's good with that.
Well, we don't have Joyce here to help schedule.
Right, so we would have to wait on arrangements and everything else to even make a date.
Well, you don't know what her schedule is gonna be with. And, and you're, and you're talking about. Very close to the.
Deadline.
The deadline. I'm perfectly happy with weighing in if. You know, if the, if the board would like.
Mm-hmm. Weighing in as?
Oh, you know, we could deliberate or we could, um. You know, I'm gonna be out of the state. The seventh through the ninth. So really, I wouldn't wanna push it past the fourteenth. The only, the only options for me would be. The tenth or the thirteenth.
The tenth or the thirteenth?
And I won't be in town.
Right, so. So unfortunately, there's not a perfect day. So.
Yes, I won't be in town.
We don't have a perfect day.
Yes.
So I, our best bet is to just. Postpone it.
Do it at the meeting.
And do it at that regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Table it for now. Do we want to do a roll call vote on that?
Yeah, we should.
My many duties. Trustee Blanchard.
Oh, yay.
Trustee Hoskins.
Yeah.
Trustee Minke.
Yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Yes.
Trustee McKay, yes. Five yes, we have the vote. We will postpone. This time I open up the meeting. For public comment. Public comments are limited to three minutes. You may comment on anything. Come on up. Come on up.
Evening, everyone.
Is your mic on? Push the little, yeah.
That one is. Good evening, everyone. I'm Johnny Jones. Um, I too have lived in the township a long time, forty-four years. I mean, as of October seventeenth, my husband and I will be married forty-four years and we moved here. We. Then, and prior to that, I was in, just across North Avenue, grew up on, in Orchard Park, but on the Penfield side, so very close to Bedford. Knew a lot about what was going on in Bedford. Um, I'm just here tonight to express concern, uh, about, um, a couple of things. Number one, I would like to make sure that we don't go back to where we're not being as transparent as possible. With our agendas and with our Zoom link. Um, those should both be. Posted on the Facebook page. People follow that in their news feeds. They don't typically go to the website, say, oh, I should check Bedford Charter Township's website. Because maybe they're having a special meeting, especially when you're having meetings that are outside of our, your regularly scheduled ones. I would dare say that's why very few people were on the special meeting, um. Online, on, what night was that? September thirtieth?
Yeah.
Um. Very few, um, as opposed to normally, there's, there's quite a few. Um, so that's just a suggestion. And then the other thing in terms of transparency. Uh, prior to this, when I was serving as the appointed supervisor for a period of time. We, we tried to make sure that we had everything that the board was receiving in their packet also posted online. There is nothing that was on, in your packets tonight in terms of the resumes. Or the letters of interest that went out to, to you all that could not have been posted for the public to see. We need to be able to see what it is you are deliberating on. I mean, that's, that's kind of how we judge what, what your decisions are. We have, if we are in agreement with them. Okay, and this is not meant as a, a terrible criticism, just in terms of some constructive criticism. All right, I just don't want us to go back to where we have been for a while. The other thing I wanna say is that there were several gentlemen here tonight who were interviewed. Who have a history, a fairly recent history with this township. And I'm, I'm very personally involved with what that history was. I, um, I bet even tonight, I almost feel a little like I have PTSD from it. Um, I was subject to not kind commentary at this, from this mic. From those two gentlemen. And you can't erase someone's history. You just can't erase it. Um, you can present yourself in a totally different manner tonight than you did as a repeated pattern of behavior. Um, I, so I just want, when you deliberate, I want you to remember that. That whoever you appoint will be the face of Bedford Township. That person cannot be triggered. That person cannot pound their hand. On. The podium and yell at someone in the audience because they don't like what they said. They can't do that. So if, if we have people who are interviewing tonight who do have that problem, that pattern of behavior. I just would warn you that, you know, there is, there's something in, in medic, medicine and healthcare called the cycle of abuse. And that is when a batterer, um, is abusive. Usually to a spouse or a significant other who then, um. Abuses or torments that person. And then all of a sudden, there's a honeymoon period. And during that honeymoon period, it's just effusiveness. Right? Until the tension builds again. And it's a cycle. I don't want our township to, and I know it's a metaphor, but I don't want our township to ignore. What is a pattern? This was not just one time. This was significant amounts of time. It was rules for radical. Which one of them at least knows well. It was isolate the target. Which was me and a few other board members. Create chaos and confusion. Get people off of stopping, thinking about what it is we were trying to do to move the township forward. It was, was very, very. Hard to work in this office. I don't want to see that happen again. Um, you may have some people here who, who have experience. Um, the one in particular who will remind you of that every time he comes to the podium. That is not sufficient. It's nice, but it's not sufficient. You also have to conduct yourself in a manner that is worthy of representing the people in Bedford. And, and that had, was not displayed. It has not been a temporary thing. And the last thing I wanna say to all the women in this room, all the women, every, every, every woman in here. That if anyone, man, woman, anyone ever yells at you, pounds a fist at you. Hits a window that you're behind and tells you that you're all evil nasty women. That is wrong. That is abuse and that should not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to come up and make a comment?
I just got one. I would say from back here, she's asked everybody how long it's been in residence in Township. I've been here seventy-six years.
Yeah.
I think you win that category.
You will. You won.
I think you win that category, Tom.
You won.
You don't look a day over forty-nine, I know.
No, we definitely didn't.
You'll have to get him a family batch.
We need one of that.
For the happy meetings, I think.
Michael, I'm the gentleman that always reminds you that I was the former supervisor here. And, uh. You know. We don't need to go backwards. That is one hundred percent correct. We don't need to go back to how the. People that work in this office that speak to the public in a manner that is demeaning. People in, in this office that use. Their other credentials, like medical credentials, that try to deem somebody crazy. And then, and then try to use the law. To, to criminalize that person. Because that is what the experience and the history of this township is. Because I am that person that is being spoken about. And as I mentioned in my interview. That case proved me innocent and exonerated me. For those comments that I made was at the end of a seventeen minute interaction where I. Was harassed, berated. Told that I was a crazy person by someone with medical credentials who should have. Hadn't something against their license for what they were doing to me. Someone in a position of authority. That has the ability to get the police. So you wanna talk about mental anguish on people? That causes mental anguish. That causes distress that we should never be doing to any resident. From that position you are given in this board. It's. I can't tell you how many people that have reached out to me from across the country that have seen those videos because they're online. That whole seventeen minute interaction is online for anyone to see. And you can see who the instigator is in the entire thing. And it is not me. And I was exonerated, no, by the, by a jury. That said that I did know wrong. And for, for anyone to come up and say that, words that anyone says from this podium is incorrect to say. Especially when they've been abused by people in the position of authority. That is absolutely a history that we do not need to go back to. I agree. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, it's trustee's personal privilege time. What was that, on the fourteen? Trustee Minke?
Thanks, everybody for coming. Thanks to all the people that come to do interviews, um. We're not here in, what, fourteen days? No, less than that. But, uh, we thank you all.
Twelve days.
Twelve days, okay. I was out five days. But, uh, thanks for coming and we'll see where we go. Thanks.
Trustee Blanchard?
Again, I'd like to echo the thank you for stepping up to become involved. Um, it's no small, um, feat to put yourself out there and. Lay yourself bare for the questions that might come at you. Um. Whoever we choose, I just wanna make sure that we keep our township moving forward in a productive manner. Um, you know, re- reaching out to that middle. There's been enough, um. Violence and calamity and chaos in the world. And especially, you know, in our. Just in our state and our country. So I would just ask that we bring the temperature down and try to work together.
Thank you. Trustee Hoskins?
Um, yeah, kind of piggybacking off of that as well. Um, thanks to all the applicants. Uh, we appreciate you taking the time, spending this late evening with us. Um, great to see some family, young generation coming. We appreciate that. It's nice to see young ones out here. Um, and we'll keep Joyce and her family, all of us in their prayers. Well, that's it.
Pressure?
I would again, thank, like to thank everyone for coming and giving us your time. Um, and again, I would like to. Apologize for Joyce not being able to be here present tonight with her father-in-law passing away. So, um, again, thank you for being here.
But I would just like to say, I'm sorry that we couldn't. Make the decision tonight. I mean, blame me if anybody. Um, because I'm just very uncomfortable not making the decision without. The partners, these, the, the three people run the township. You know, I'm a trustee, I'm here, maybe a couple of times a month, that's it. I do also appreciate the fact that you put up with me running the meeting. Um, I've run a lot of meetings in my life, never run a township meeting, that's my first one. So I apologize if I screwed up a lot. Um, but again, thank you all for coming. And.
To all a good night.
To all a good night. Adjourned.